हरे हरे कृष्णा धनुत प्रणाम स्वाद देवोटीज थैंक यू फॉर जॉइनिंग इन फॉर अवर टुडे स्टडी सेशन विल स्टार्ट विथ डी प्रेयर्स ओम ज्ञान गिमरंदस्या ज्ञानांजन शलाकाया चक्षुरुण मिलितम येन तस्मय श्री गुरवेनम् ह श्री चैतन्य मनोबूष्टम् स्तापिकम् येन बूतलेस प्रयम रूप कदामयम् दतातीश्व प्रणातिकम् वन्दे हम श्री गुरु श्री उत्पलकम्लम् श्री गुरुण वैश्नवम् श श्री रूपम् साग्रजातम् सहगणरगुणार्थान्वितम् तम सजीवम् साधवैतम् सावधूतम् परिजना सहितम् श्री कृष्ण चैतन्य देवम् श्री राधा कृष्ण पादान् सहगणललिता श्री विशाकान्वितम् श नमो विष्णुपादाया कृष्ण प्रेष्ठाय बूतले श्रीमते विक्तिवेदांत स्वामी नितिनामीने नमस्ते सरस्वते देवे गौरवाणी प्रचारिने निर्विशेष शुन्यवादी पास चात्य देश अथारिने नमो महावदन्याय कृष्ण प्रेम प्रधायेते कृष्णाय कृष्ण चैतन्य नामनी गौर दुशीनम् ह पंचतत्वात्मकम् कृष्णम्बक्त रूपस्वरूपकम् बक्तावतारम् बक्ताप्यम् नमामी भक्तशक्तिकम् हे कृष्णा करुणा सिंदो दीनबंदो जगतपते गोपेश गोपिका कांत राधा कांत नमो सुते तप्त कांचन गौरंगी राधे विन्दावनी ईश्वरी पृषभानु सुते देवी प्रणमामी हरि प्रिय भांचा कल्पतरूबियस्य ग्रपास हिंदू गयेवच्या पतितानां पावनीभ्यो वैश्नवेभ्यो नमो नमः गुरवेगौर चंद्राय राधिकाय धराले कृष्णाय कृष्ण बक्ताय तत बक्ताय नमो नमः मुकम् करोति वाचालम् पंगुम् लंगये दीगिरीं विद कृपात्मम् वन्दे श्री गुरुण दीनतारिनम् प्रणाम आनंद मातवम् श्री कृष्ण चैतन्य ईश्वरम् हदी ही ओम तत्सत हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा कृष्ण कृष्णा हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा सो वी बेलकम ऑल ऑफ यू फॉर अवर टुडे स्टडी सेशन वी आर स्टडीइंग श्रीमत भगवत गीता वी आर गोंद विथ स्टार्ट चैप्टर नंबर थ्री टुडे सो यस्टरडे वी वे वी वे टॉकिंग अबाउट हो भगवत गीता एस एंड डेट विथ चैप्टर नंबर तू राइट सो व्हाट आर व्हाट आर वी गोंद विथ फर्थर स्टडी भगवत गीता एस कंप्लीटेड बट वी सी इन चैप्टर नंबर तू एट एंड ऑफ एट एंड ऑफ इट वी सी डेट कृष्णा हैस कंक्लूडेड भगवत गीता बाय सिंग डेट एनी पर्सन हुस अस्तिया हुस अस्तितप प्रज्ञा डेट मींस वन हुस नॉट अफेक्टेड बाय डी डुअलिटीज ऑफ हैप्पीनेस एंड सफरिंग हुस नॉट अफेक्टेड बाय डी डुअलिटीज ऑफ हीट एंड गोल एंड वन हु अंटीन्यूस तू परफॉर्म इट्स ड्यूटी रिस्पेक्टिव ऑफ ऑल सरकमस्टांसेस सच अन पर्सन कैन अटेन डी किंगडम ऑफ गॉड सो विथ दिस डेट इस डी अल्टीमेट कंक्लुशन वेदेश युसरवे रहमेव वेद्यो व्हाट इस डी कंक्लुशन ऑफ भगवत गीता हो डू वी गो बैक होम बैक तू गॉड हेड एंड सर्व कृष्णा इटरनली सो कृष्णा एस कंक्लूडेड बट देन इन डी फ्रॉम डी थर्ड चैप्टर ओवरवर्ड्स वी नो डेट अर्जुना वस पुट इन डी एल्यूशन सो डेट अर्जुना को आफ्टर सर्टेन क्वेश्चंस डेट इन डी फ्यूचर जनरेशन्स इट वुड सॉल्व डी वेरीज स्क्वेरीज डेट माइट अराइज इन डी माइंड ऑफ पीपल हु माइट स्टडी भगवत गीता सो इन डेट वे कृष्णा प्रियम्टेड अर्जुना तू आफ्टर सर्टेन क्वेश्चंस डेट वुड बी बेनिफिशियल फॉर ऑल ऑफ अस इन डी लॉन्ग रन सो इन डेट वे वी सी डेट चैप्टर थ्री बेसिकली डील्स विथ कर्म योगा वेयर इन अर्जुना बिगिंस डी चैप्टर वे आफ्टरिंग कृष्णा ओ कृष्णा ओके यू एक्सप्लेन एवरीथिंग तू मी यू एक्सप्लेन डी सांखी योगा तू मी यू अलसो यू एक्सप्लेन डी डिफरेंस बॉडी इन डी सोल यू अलसो एक्सप्लेन अबाउट बुद्धि योगा डेट मींस अस शत्रय व्हाट आई शुड बी डूइंग एवरीथिंग बट देन आई एम सिल्क कन्फ्यूज्ड राइट आई एम सिल्क कन्फ्यूज्ड इफ वी वांट मी तू इंगेज इन डिस वरफेयर बिकॉज़ व्हाट गुड विल कम राइट डेट इस नॉट गुड डेट विल कम ऑफ हैविंग डिस पर्टिकुलर बैटल राइट यू ऑलरेडी यू ऑलरेडी स्पोकन तू मी अबाउट ज्ञान योगा जिस मींस डी सोल कैन नॉट बी कट इन डी पीसेस यू नो सो वी आई अंडरस्टैंड डी बॉडी इस नॉट अट ऑल इंपॉर्टेंट डी सोल इस व्हाट इस इंपॉर्टेंट सो आई एम वेरी वेरी कन्फ्यूज्ड राइट बिकॉज़ अक्चुअली डी वर्ड डेट प्रोपा यूज्ड इस डी ट्रांसलेशन इस आई एम कन्फ्यूज्ड एंड बिविल्डर्ड बाय योर इक्विवोकल इंस्ट्रक्शंस इक्विवोकल इंस्ट्रक्शंस मींस कृष्णा कृष्णा एस जस्ट एक्सप्लेन दिस इस सांखी योगा इफ यू इफ यू एंप्लॉय डिस सांखी योगा सांख्या मींस ज्ञाना इन इन टर्म्स ऑफ योर योर वर्ण एंड आश्रमा देन दिस इस डी ड्यूटी डेट यू हैव तू परफॉर्म सो ही वेरी वेरी क्लेरली टोल्ड अर्जुना अर्जुना गेट अप विथ डिटेमिनेशन एंड फाइट येट अर्जुना इस कन्फ्यूज्ड व्हाट आई व्हाट आई आई शुड पुस्त तू डू राइट लाइक डेट सो लेट्स मूव फॉरवर्ड लेट्स फर्स्ट सी डी कपल ऑफ वर्सेस डी फर्स्ट व्ही वर्सेस वेयर इट टॉक्स अबाउट डी डी क्वेरी बाय अर्जुना एंड देन वी गो हेड विथ हो डस कृष्णा रिसॉल्व डीज स्क्वेरीज एंड हो डस इट मैनिफोल्ड इन डी नेक्स्ट कपल ऑफ चैप्टर्स राइट सो चैप्टर थ्री इस इस अन काइंड ऑफ एक्सटेंशन ऑफ डी भगवत गीता जस्ट तू मेक इट मोर क्लियर फॉर फॉर डी फॉर डी पीपल इन डी आगे ऑफ कली पर्टिकुलरली पीपल इन डी आगे ऑफ कली बिकॉज़ वी नीड अन लॉट ऑफ एक्सप्लेनेशन राइट बिकॉज़ सिंग्स आर नॉट ब्लैक एंड व्हाइट समटेन्स लॉट ऑफ ग्रे एरियास सो डोज़ एरियास रिक्वायर्ड क्वेश्चनिंग सो डेट वी आर एबल तू कम तू डी राइट फ्रेम ऑफ माइंड तू अंडरस्टैंड व्हाट इस अक्चुअली डी थिंग तू बी डू डेट विल स्टार्ट टेक्स्ट वन ऑफ भगवत भगवत गीता चैप्टर नंबर थ्री ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय टेक्स्ट नंबर वन ओके देवोटीज वांट तू रीड में रेज योर हैंड एंड देन वी कैन रीड वन बाय वन अर्जुन वाचा ओके श्रीदर्प्रभु ओके श्रीदर्प्रभु जॉइनिंग अस रॉन्ग टाइम हरे कृष्णा यस प्रभु गो हेड टेक्स्ट वन अर्जुन वाचा
अर्जुन वाचा जय सी चेक कर्म जय सी चेक कर्मनस्य कर्मनस्य मदा बुद्धिक्षणार्थन तत्किम कर्मणी को तत्किम कर्मणी को रोमांग नियो जैसी केशवा
ट्रांसलेशन एंड प्रोपा
अर्जुना सेड ओ झनार्दरा ओ केशवा व्हाट डू यू वांट तू इंगेज मी इन डिस डांसी वैल्व वैल्फाई इफ यू थिंक डेट इंटेलिजेंस इस बेटर थन बेटर थन फ्यूरिटिव वर्क परपेट डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गॉड श्री कृष्णा हैस वेरी एलेबरेटली डिस्क्राइब डी कांस्टिट्यूशन ऑफ डी साउथ इन डी प्रीवियस चैप्टर विथ डी व्यू तू डेलीवरी इस इंडिविजेंट अर्जुना फ्रॉम डी वर्शन ऑफ मैटेरियल मैटेरियल ग्रीप एंड डी पाथ ऑफ रिलीजेशन हैस बीन रिकमेंडेड बुद्धि योगा और कृष्णा कांस्टेशनेस समटेन्स कृष्णा कांस्टेशनेस इस मिसअंटरस्टुड तू बी इनर्सिया एंड वन विच सच अन मिसअंटरस्टैंडिंग ऑफन विदर्ड तू यह सेक्युलर प्लेसेस तू बिकम फुली कृष्णा कांस्टेशन बाय चांटिंग डी होली नेबल ऑफ लॉर्ड कृष्णा बट विदाउट बीइंग ट्रेंड इन डी फिलासफी ऑफ कृष्णा कांस्टेशनेस इट इस नॉट अवेसेबल तू चांट डी होली नेम ऑफ कृष्णा इट इस डी इट इस डी सेक्युलर प्लेस वेयर वन में अक्वेर वन इस चीप अपचार्शन फ्रॉम डी इनोसेंट पब्लिक अर्जुना अलसो थॉट ऑफ कृष्णा कांस्टेशनेस और बुद्धि योगा और इंटेलिजेंस इन स्पिरिचुअल एडवांसमेंट ऑफ नॉलेज आई समथिंग लाइक रिटायरमेंट फ्रॉम डी एक्टिव लाइफ एंड डी प्रैक्टिस ऑफ फिनेंस एंड डी अस्टर्टिटी एट डी शेड्यूल प्लेस इन अदर वर्ड्स ही वांटेड तू स्किलफुली वाइड डी फाइटिंग बाय यूजिंग कृष्णा कांस्टेशनेस आस अन एक्सक्यूज बट आस अन सिंसियर स्टूडेंट ही प्लेस डी मैटर बिफोर हिस मैटर एंड क्वेश्चन कृष्णा आस तू इस बेस्ट कोर्स ऑफ एक्शन इट आंसर लॉर्ड कृष्णा एलेबरेटली एक्सप्लेन कर्म योगा और वर्क इन कृष्णा कांस्टेशनेस इन डिस थर्ड चैप्टर हरे कृष्णा
सो मच हरे प्रभु सो कृष्णा है कृष्णा इस एलेबरेटली एक्सप्लेनिंग व्हाटएवर सांख्या एंड बुद्धि योगा डेट इस थॉट इन डी सेकंड चैप्टर ही इस गोंद तू मोर फोकस नॉट ऑन डी एप्लीकेशन एस्पेक्ट ऑफ इट डेट इस कर्म योगा राइट कर्म मींस डी एक्टिविटीज डेट वी डू आर अलसो कर्म एंड समटेन्स रिएक्शन डेट वी गेट फॉर अवर एक्टिविटीज आर अलसो कॉल्ड कर्म राइट बट यर इन डी पर्टिकुलर चैप्टर कृष्णा इस गोंद विथ फोकस ऑन हो आर यू गोइंग तू परफॉर्म अवर एक्टिविटीज डेट इस गोंद बी डी प्राइमरी फोकस ऑफ टुडे सेशन अलरेड सो लेट्स सी व्हाट अर्जुना अन कन्टिन्यूस तू आफ्टर सिंग क्वेरीज लेट्स सी व्हाट इट इस टेक्स्ट नंबर तू व्यामीश्रे ओके प्रभु ओनली कैन कंटिन्यू रीडिंग आर यू एबल तू ऑन म्यूट ओके आदेश विल कम बैक तू यू शिंदु माता जी गो हेड
यस हरे कृष्णा प्रणाम
हरे कृष्णा प्रणाम
व्यामी व्यामीश्रे ने बवा किये ना बुद्ध मोहय शिवमे तत्कम्बद निश्चित्या एन श्रेयो हमाप्नया ट्रांसलेशन प्रोपा बस बंग्रेश्वर प्रोपा शिला प्रोपा की जय माय इंटेलिजेंस इस बिविल्डर्ड बाय योर इक्विवोकल इंस्ट्रक्शंस देयरफुल प्लीज टेल मी डेसिसिबली व्हिच विल बी डी मोस्ट बेनिफिशियल फॉर मी प्रोपा डी प्रीवियस चैप्टर आस अन प्रलूट तू डी भगवत गीता मेनी डिफरेंट पास वेर एक्सप्लेन सच अन सांख्या योगा बुद्धि योगा कंट्रोल ऑफ डी सेंसेस बाय इंटेलिजेंस वर्क विथाउट फ्रूटिटीव डिजायर एंड डी पोजीशन ऑफ डी नियोपाय दिस वस ऑल प्रेसेंटेड अनसिस्टमैटिकली अन मोर ऑर्गेनाइज्ड आउटलाइन ऑफ डी पाथ वुड बी नेसेसिटी फॉर एक्शन एंड अंडरस्टैंडिंग अर्जुना देयरफुल वांटेड तू क्लियर अप डीज अपरेंटली कन्फ्यूजिंग मैटर्स सो डेट एनी कॉर्मन मैन कोड एक्सेप्ट डेम विदाउट मिस इंप्रूवेशन ऑल्डो कृष्णा है नो इंटेंशन ऑफ कन्फ्यूजिंग अर्जुना बाय एनी जगलरी वर्ड्स अर्जुना कोड नॉट फॉलो डी प्रोसेस ऑफ कृष्णा कांस्टेशनेस एथ डी बाय इनर्सिया और बाय एक्टिव सर्विस इन अदर वर्ड्स बाय हिस क्वेश्चंस ही इस क्लियरिंग डी पाथ ऑफ कृष्णा कांस्टेशनेस फॉर ऑल स्टूडेंट्स हु सीरियसली वांट तू अंडरस्टैंड डी मिस्ट्री ऑफ डी भगवत गीता
गो हेड माता तो वी दिस इस दिस इस व्हाट वी डिस्कस्ड ऑलरेडी राइट सो आर यू गोइंग तू सिट डाउन इन अन चेयर एंड देन डिसाइड डेट आई एम नॉट गोंद डू माय ड्यूटी बिकॉज़ नॉव आई एम कृष्णा कांस्टेशन आई एम गोंद सिट डाउन इन वन प्लेस एंड चांट हरे कृष्ण एंड क्लीयरली प्रोपा जिस टोल्ड डेट इस नॉट डी एटीट्यूड ऑफ अन देवोटी राइट एस्पेशली अन पर्सन हु डू नॉट हैव नॉलेज डेट इस नॉट डी पाथ सो व्हाट इस डी पाथ डेट इस व्हाट वी गोंद तू कृष्णा इस गोंद टेल हरे एक्जेक्टली व्हाट इस डी एक्शन डेट वी नीड तू टेक आस अन देवोटी ओके गो हेड श्री भगवान वाचा
टेक्स्ट थ्री श्री भगवान वाचा लो केसम्मिन बिबिगा निष्ठा पूरा प्रोकामयानगा ज्ञान योगे न शांख्या नाम कर्म योगे न योगी नाम ट्रांसलेशन प्रोपा बस बंग्रेश्वर प्रोपा शिला प्रोपा की जय सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गॉड एट सेड ओ सिंदस अर्जुना आई हैव ऑलरेडी एक्सप्लेन्ड डेट डेट आर तू क्लासेस ऑफ मैन हु ट्राई तू रिलाइज डी सेल्फ सम इनक्लाइंड तू अंडरस्टैंड इट बाय एंपिरिकल फिलासफिकल स्पेकुलेशन एंड अदर्स बाय डिवोशनल सर्विस प्रोपा डी सेकंड चैप्टर वर्स 39 डी लॉर्ड एक्सप्लेन तू काइंड्स ऑफ प्रोसीडर्स नाम बी सांख्या योगा एंड कर्म योगा और बुद्धि योगा इन डिस वर्स डी लॉर्ड एक्सप्लेन डी सेम मोर क्लेरली सांख्या योगा और डी एनालेटिकल स्टडी ऑफ डी नेचर ऑफ डी स्पिरिट एंड मैटर इस डी सब्जेक्ट मैटर फॉर पर्सन्स हु आर इनक्लाइंड तू स्पेकुलेट एंड अंडरस्टैंड थिंग्स बाय एक्सपेरिमेंटल नॉलेज एंड फिलासफी डी अदर क्लास ऑफ मैन वर्क इन कृष्णा कांस्टेशनेस आस इट इस एक्सप्लेन इन डी 61 वर्स ऑफ डी सेकंड चैप्टर डी लॉर्ड एस एक्सप्लेन अलसो इन डी 39 वर्स डेट वी वर्किंग बाय डी प्रिंसिपल्स ऑफ बुद्धि योगा और कृष्णा कांस्टेशनेस वन कैन बी रिलीव्ड फ्रॉम डी बोंस ऑफ एक्शन एंड फर्थर मोट डेट इस नॉट फ्लॉव इन डी प्रोसेस डी सेम प्रिंसिपल इस मोर क्लेरली एक्सप्लेन इन डी 61 वर्स डेट डिस बुद्धि योगा इस तू डिफरेंट एंटायरली ऑन डी सुप्रीम और मोर स्पेसिफिकली ऑन कृष्णा एंड इन डिस वे ऑल डी सेंसेस कैन बी ब्रॉट एंड डी कंट्रोल वेरी इजीली देयरफुल बोथ डी योगा आर इंटरडिपेंडेंट आस रिलिजन एंड फिलासफी रिलिजन विथाउट फिलासफी सेंटीमेंट और समटेन्स फैनैक्टिसिस्म बाय फिलासफी विथाउट रिलिजन इस मेंटल स्पेकुलेशन डी अल्टीमेट गोल इस कृष्णा बिकॉज़ डी फिलासफिक्स हु आर अलसो सिंसियरली सर्चिंग आफ्टर डी अब्सोल्यूट ट्रुथ कम इन एंड तू कृष्णा कांस्टेशनेस दिस इस अलसो स्टेटेड इन डी भगवत गीता डी होल प्रोसेस इस तू अंडरस्टैंड डी रियल पोजीशन ऑफ डी दिस इस फिलासफिकल स्पेकुलेशन बाय व्हिच ग्रैजुअली वन में कम तू डी पॉइंट ऑफ कृष्णा कांस्टेशनेस डी अदर प्रोसेस इस डायरेक्टली कनेक्टिंग विथ एवरीथिंग इन कृष्णा कांस्टेशनेस ऑफ डीज तू डी पाथ ऑफ कृष्णा कांस्टेशनेस इस बेटर बिकॉज़ इट डेट नॉट डिपेंड ऑन पुरिफाइंग डी सेंसेस बाय डी फिलासफिकल प्रोसेस कृष्णा कांस्टेशनेस इस इट्सेल्फ डी पुरिफाइंग प्रोसेस एंड बाय डी डायरेक्ट मेथोड ऑफ डिवोशनल सर्विस इट इस साइमिटेनेसली इजी एंड सबलाइन
हरे कृष्णा थैंक यू माता हरे बोल थैंक यू सो हरे वेरी ब्यूटीफुली प्रोपा थैस वेरी क्लेरली गैनिएटेड व्हाट व्हाट हैपन इन डी सेकंड चैप्टर एंड व्हाट इस होवा वी कंटिन्यूइंग इन डी थर्ड चैप्टर राइट इन डी सेकंड चैप्टर वी ऑलरेडी डिस्कस डी फर्स्ट सेक्शन आफ्टर अर्जुना सरिंदर्स वेयर कृष्णा स्टार्ट स्पीकिंग फर्स्ट ही स्टार्ट स्पीकिंग ऑफ सांखी योगा डिफरेंस बिन बॉडी इन डी सोल हो डी सोल इस इटरनल डी बॉडी इस ऑलवेज टेंपरेरी एंड देन फ्रॉम सांखी योगा और ज्ञान योगा ही गोज ऑन तू बुद्धि योगा और कर्म योगा वेयर ही सेलिंग आस डी शत्रय यू शुड बी डूइंग ऑल दिस ऑल दिस ऑल दिस लाइक डेट देन यू नो ही अलसो सेज डेट डू योर ड्यूटी गेट अप गेट गेट अप डिटेमिनेशन एंड फाइट ओ अर्जुना लाइक डेट ही सेज राइट बट अर्जुना इस सिल्क कन्फ्यूज्ड राइट बाय सी अलसो आई एम शुड पुस्त तू परफॉर्म माय कर्म एंड आस डी शत्रय आई एम सो आई एम शुड पुस्त तू फाइट डी वर व्हाय आई वी सब व्हाय व्हाय शुड वी फाइट डिस वर जस्ट बिकॉज़ अन सर्टेन सर्टेन पीपल लाइक मी वांट तू बिकम डी किंग राइट वेयर कृष्णा अक्चुअली बिफोर डी वर हैस अक्चुअली गोंद आस्किंग फॉर फाइव विलिज्ज फॉर डी पांडवस सो डेट डेट आर ऑल किंग्स डेट शुड हैव सम किंगडम वेयर डेट कैन डेट कैन रूल एंड टेक केयर डी पीपल इन डेट पर डोस वेयर एट लिस्ट फाइव विलिज्ज एक्सेट्रा बट सिंस दुर्योधना वस नॉट वेल्लिंग तू गिव एनी नॉट इवन नॉट इवन यू नो डी डी लैंड डेट कैन बी डेट कैन बी डेट कैन बी ओक्किपेड बाय अन पिन आस इन डी वे सेड आई कैन नॉट गिव यू एनीथिंग सो डिस वर बिकेम वेरी इनेबिटेबल राइट एंड देन इन डी इन डी 2.61 डेट इस वेयर डी सेकंड हाफ ऑफ डी सेक्शन वेयर कृष्णा इस टॉकिंग अबाउट बुद्धि योगा और
In my own Varna and Ashrama and perform my duty and very easily I can attain the same destination that a sanyasi will attain. By performing the principles of sanyas very nicely. As a grhasta, if you adopt the principles that are prescribed for a grhasta and in this way work in Krishna consciousness, I will attain the same destination. That a sanyasi may attain even after following so much of austerity, traveling around the world, preaching Krishna consciousness etcetera, right? Each one has their own swadharma, right? Swadharma, if swadharma even for all, it's there for the four varnas also. And it is also there for the ashramas also, right? Like for example, a brahmachari has to, has to engage in swadhyaya, has to engage in teaching others like that. And then grhasta, a grhasta what he should do, a grhasta should give in charity. And yesterday also somebody was asking, right? What is charity? Whom should we give charity? How we should give charity? It was also explained in Bhagavad Gita, how we should give charity to a person who is in, who is serving the supreme personality of Godhead. Otherwise, if our charity is in the mode of passion or in the mode of ignorance, then they will bind us. They will give us either reactions sinful or positive reactions depending on how the money that we give are being utilized by the person who received the money from us. So in this world, there is no black and white, there are shades of gray and how do we traverse that journey back home, back to Godhead, right? That is very hope giving where Prabhupada is quoting. In material world, if we don't, if it is not a success, then it is zero, then it is a failure, it is black or white, right? Either I get the destination or don't get the destination, there is no, there is no value to the process in the material world. Whereas in the spiritual world, every step, every process is a relationship with the supreme personality of Godhead. I'm traversing that path, increasing my, my desire to serve the Lord, to increase my, my desire to serve and satisfy the supreme personality of Godhead. So the process itself is purifying and there is no diminution in this path. If I have attained a certain level, I will continue from that level irrespective of whether I have changed my body or whether I am in the same body etcetera, etcetera. So this path is very, very clearly, you know, not, not a risky process at all. But only thing what we should have is, we should have faith in this process, right? That is the only ingredient that is required. Okay, let's move forward, text number five. Okay, hold read. Sudha Madhaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna, Dhanvath Pranam. Nahe Kshetshana Pichatutishthatyakarma Kruthkaryate Hyavasa Karma Sarva Prakriti Jairgunai. Translation and perpert by Shri La Prabhupada, Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jay. Everyone is supposed to act helplessly according to the qualities he has acquired from the modes of material nature. Therefore, no one can reframe from doing something not even for a moment. Perpert, it is not a question of embodied life, but it is the nature of the soul to be this active. Without the presence of the spirit soul, the material body cannot move. The body is only a dead vehicle to be worked by the spirit soul which is always active and cannot stop even for a moment. As such, the spirit soul has to be engaged in the good work of Krishna consciousness. Otherwise, it will be engaged in occupations dictated by the illusionary energy. In contact with material energy, the spirit soul acquires material hopes and to purify the soul from such affinities. It is necessary to engage in the prescribed duties enjoined in the Shastras. But if the soul is engaged in its natural function of Krishna consciousness, whatever he is able to do is good for him. The Shrimad Bhagavatam 1.5.17 informs this. Tekva Swadharmam Charanam Bhujam Harer Bhajan Apakpo Atapate Tato Yadi. Yatra Pavah Bhadrav Abhut Amushyakim Ko Varthap To Bajatam Swadharmata. If some, someone takes to Krishna consciousness, even though he may not follow the prescribed duties in the Shastras. Or execute the devotional service properly and even though he may fall down from the standard, there is no loss or evil for him. But if he carries out all the injunctions for purification in the Shastras, what does it avail him if he is not Krishna conscious? So the purificatory process is necessary for reaching this point of Krishna consciousness. Therefore, sanyasa or any purificatory process is to help reach the ultimate goal of becoming Krishna.
Without which, everything is considered a failure. Okay, so thank you, Marji. So here, Prabhupada is making a very wonderful point, right? Again, we are going back to the point of Neha Vikraman Ashoshi, there is no loss or diminution in this path of Krishna Bhakti. And all of the, all of the austerities that we do, right? Sarve Vidi Nishid Yashur Ete Yo Revakinkara, hmm, what is that? Sarve Vidi, all the rules and regulations that we follow, yama niyama, right? What, what should not be done and what should be done, yama niyama, right? We are, all of those to do and not do things are servants of these two principles. What are those two principles? Always remember Krishna, never forget Krishna, right? So these, these are the important principles, but if one is adopting the order of sanyas, then what is he doing? He's actually going from one place to another, he's a parivrjaka charya, he's going from one place to another, preaching the message of Krishna consciousness to others, right? If that is the case, then he's, he's using the, he's doing a proper, proper duty as per being a sanyasa. Because that is what is prescribed in Kalayuga, that Yaare Dekhi Tare Kahi Krishna Upadesh, right? One need not adorn the, the garb of a sanyasi to preach the message of Krishna consciousness, how? Because now anybody, because we're not going to give any kind of mental speculation, we are not going to tell anything whatever we like. We are going to stick to what are the perports and commentary given by Prabhupada and he's just going to simply repeat Krishna's words and what are, what is instruction given by Prabhupada, right? So that in itself is a purificatory process and that is equal to a sanyasi actually carrying on his duties. Just like we are grhasta, we are also in, you're doing some activities which are going to purify us and take us back home, back to Godhead. Just like a sanyasi, his duty is to go around as a parivrjaka charya, go, go around the world, like sanyas, Prabhupada. Right, Prabhupada went to the western world, right? And all of our gurus we see, they're all traveling from one place to another, giving Krishna to everybody, right? So in this way, whatever processes we are doing are going to purify us and the ultimate goal, Vedasju Sare Raha Meva Veda. If you don't come to the point that Krishna is the supreme personality of Godhead, then it is all Shrava Evahe Kevalam, they are all useless labor like that. Okay, now let's move on to text number six. Okay, text number six, Shobha Madhaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna, Dhanvath Pranam, Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jay. Text number six. Translation day, yes, Bhakti, Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jay. One who responds to senses of action but whose mind dwells on sense objects certainly deludes himself and is called a pretender. Perpert by Shri La Prabhupada. There are many pretenders who refuse to work in Krishna consciousness but make a show of meditation while actually dwelling within the mind of conscience enjoyment. Such pretenders may also speak on dry philosophy in order to bluff sophisticated followers, but according to this verse, these are the greatest cheaters. For sense enjoyment, one can act in any capacity of the social order, but if one follows the rules and regulations of his particular status, he can make gradual process in purifying his existence. But he who makes the show of being a yogi while actually searching for the object of sense gratification, much be called the great testator. Even though he sometimes speaks of philosophy, his knowledge has no value because the effect of such a simple man's knowledge are taken away by the illusionary energy of the Lord. Such a pretender's mind is always impure and therefore the show of yogic meditation has no value whatsoever. Dhanvath Pranam, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so a very nice word Prabhupada uses in most of his perports, he talks about a show bottle spiritualist. Show bottle spiritualist means they keep in the showcase, right? Outside, when you, when you go to a shop, right? You don't know what is contained in that, they just kept outside that this bottle contains this so and so. And then they have several bottles inside the shop, which may not be, which may not be reflecting the same thing what is there within that particular bottle. You know, within that, that bottle may be nicely decorated, the contents of that particular bottle may look very nice, right? But we are not going to go by the looks, right? You're going to, if you're buying some bottle containing a particular thing, you will use that bottle, right? So they will not, that is not for sale, that is only for showpiece. Similarly, some spiritualists, we cannot say, some religionists, right? They practice all these rituals just to ensure, just to make the people say, oh my God, this person is so renowned, this person is so, you know, he knows so many verses of Bhagavad Gita. Oh, this person is so religious, this person is doing so and so, this person is making powder, this, this person is giving coins. Ah, like all of that, what happens, it becomes like a kind of an attraction to pull the crowd, right? But internally, what happens, such a person is not satisfied within his heart, right? In that way, this is, person is only showing himself or portraying himself as something else, right? Whereas, whereas that person is actually not able to, not able to realize anything within this, within his own heart, right? That is what is called show bottle spiritualism. That means I'm showing to others that I am peaceful, I am happy, I am helping others, I am charitable etcetera. But within my mind, I'm very troubled because I'm looking at sense objects, I want to enjoy the sense objects, but externally I have to throw up a facade, right? Just to fool others, in that way whom am I cheating? I'm cheating myself, right? I'm not cheating others, but I'm only cheating myself, but what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to cheat the others, right? Because I talk philosophy, then I tell them that, you know, you should not engage in all these things, you should do these things, not doing all these things, right? But as long as a person is not practicing, that person is the greatest cheater, he is called as a pretender, right? That's why it is said Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is Patita Pavana. Patita Pavana means we are all fallen souls, right? In, in Kalayuga, we've been through so many species wherein we have so many desires, trying to, you know, so much desire accumulated in our hearts. We are, they are very difficult to give up our desire for material things, right? So we're all patita, we are all, we are all fallen souls and the Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is Pavana. He is a deliverer of the fallen souls, that is Patita Pavana, right? But he is not Kapata Pavana, right? If I have something within my heart, I won't enjoy the material things, but outwardly I'm telling you, no, no, I don't want anything, right? I'm very happy in renouncing everything like that. Outwardly, when I renounce what happens, I am bleeding in my heart, but outside, outside world is thinking of me as something else. So in that way, what is it? I'm a kapata. Kapata means duplicitous, duplicitous behavior when I do, then neither am I happy because my heart is not peaceful. Nor are the people who are going to follow you, they will not follow you for long, right? Because they say, right, one person can fool all the people but only for some time, right? We cannot fool all the people all the time, right? And they can, they can fool some people, like some real fools are there, then they, they might, they might get fooled all the time. But all the people cannot be fooled all the time, the, the real picture will anyway come out, isn't it? So in that way, these cheaters, ah, they have, their knowledge has no value because it is not going to help them, they are unnecessarily misguiding other people also. And in this way, there is no use of such a pretenders practicing of yoga or practicing of even bhakti for that reason, yeah? So Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is Patita Pavana, so it's very nice if you can just accept the fact that I have these desires, but I am chanting and doing all these things. But ultimately, I want to become, I want to only have this desire to serve the supreme personality of Godhead, I don't want any other desire lurking in my mind, right? That is being, accepting our position as patita, which is our true position, right? Not acting as if I am in a very elevated position and in that way cause ourselves misery as well as others. Okay, Sri Priya, Madhaji, go ahead, text number seven.
Hare Krishna, Madhaji.
Hare Krishna.
And the other hand, if a sincere person tries to control, control the active senses by mind and begins karma yoga in Krishna consciousness, without attachment, he is far superior. Perpert by Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jay. Instead of becoming a pseudo transcendentalist for the sake of wanton living and sense enjoyment, it is far better to remain in one's own business and execute the purpose of life. Which is to get free from material bondage and enter into the kingdom of God. The prime swarta gati or goal of self-interest is to reach Vishnu. The whole institution of Varna and Ashrama is designed to help us reach this goal of life. A householder can also reach this destination by regulated service in Krishna consciousness. For self-realization, one can live a controlled life prescribed as prescribed in Shastras and continue carrying out his business without attachment and in that way make progress. A sincere person who follows this method is far better situated than the false pretender who adopts show bottle spiritualism to cheat innocent public. A sincere people in the street is far better than the charlatan meditator, who, meditator, who meditates only for the sake of making a living. Hare Krishna, Madhaji, thank you.
Yes, thank you, yeah. So the same point is being detailed by Shri La Prabhupada even further because this is very, very important. Because, you know, there is this, what do you call, there is this normal, you know, in primary school, they, they, they tell us the story of tiger and a wolf, right? No, tiger, no, no, there's, yeah, tiger and, and you know, a boy, right? And the boy actually keeps on lying, saying that, no, no, what was that? Yeah, so a, a boy was herding sheep, right? And every day he would, he would shout, you know, wolf, wolf, wolf like that. And every, every time people will come to save this particular boy, but they will come and then they will, they will know that this boy is simply playing a prank, right? Playing a prank on them. And then really, when, you know, when really on, on a particular day when the wolf comes and the boy shouts wolves, 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 please somebody come and save me. Then people think that, you know, no, no, this boy is just joking and that way the wolf actually eats up the boy like that. So the more we are trying to cheat others, right? Then genuinely, when we are looking for help and crying out for help, then nobody will be there to help us, right? That is why if we, if we show to others what we really are, then that will really save us. Because that person who is willing to help us can know what the problem is diagnosed and help us treat that particular problem. Rather than, you know, give a facade outside saying that, you know, I don't have that issue or trying to say that I have a problem just to prove that, you know, actually I don't have that problem. But I'm just trying to, you know, tell you, to make you know that I don't have that problem. So people will come and help you and then they realize that you are, you know, you are having, you're being duplicitous and then when you really need help, you will have nobody, right? So that is why it is, it is always necessary to be transparent to our spiksha gurus and they also say, you know, you're to a lawyer or a doctor and you're spiritual guru, you should not lie, right? Because if we lie, then the medicine or the cure that we will get will not satisfy the purpose of what we are looking for like that. All right, let's move ahead, text number eight. Okay, text number eight, hold read. Okay, very important verse, let's read, Nagavini Madhaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna, Dhanvath Pranam to all. Madhaji, this is not possible in Hindi in Sanskrit, slogan?
Madhaji, is your Bhagavad Gita copy available?
Ah, yes, Madhaji.
Have you read it from Bhagavad Gita?
Okay, I will read it now, I have to take it out. Nityam Kurukarma, Nityam Kurukarma.
Nityam Kurukarma, Karma, 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 okay, the translation, Madhaji.
Translation, perform your prescribed duty for doing so is better than not working, than not working. One cannot even maintain one's physical body without work, perpert. There are many pseudo meditators, sorry, you're scrolling, meditators who misenter, who misrepresent themselves. As belongings of belongings to high percentage and great professional men who falsely pose that they have sacrificed everything for the sake of advancement in spiritual life. Lord Krishna did not want Arjuna to become a pretender, rather the Lord desired that Arjuna perform his prescribed duties as, prescribed duties as set forth for Kshatriyas. Arjuna was a, Arjuna, Arjuna was a householder, householder and a military general. And therefore, it was better for him to, better for him to remain as such and perform his religious duties as prescribed for the, as prescribed for the householder Kshatriya. Such activities gradually cleanses the heart of a mundani man and free from, pardon?
Mundane, mundane, mundane means.
Yes, mundane man and free from, and free him from material contamination. So-called, so-called renunciation for the purpose of maintenance is never, never approved by the Lord. Nor for any religious, nor by any religious scripture. After all, one has to maintain one's body and soul together by some work. Work, work would not be given up capriciously without, without purification of materialistic propensities. Anyone who is in the material world is certainly, certainly possessed of the impure propensity for, for, for lodging it over material nature. Or, or.
Oh, covered, Madhaji. Or in other words, for sense gratification.
In other words, for sense gratification. Such polluted propensities have to be, have to be cleared. Without doing, without doing so through prescribed duties, one should, one should nevertheless attempt to become a so-called, so-called transcendentalist. Renouncing work and leaving, leaving it the cost of, living at the cost of others.
Yeah, thank you, Madhaji, Hare Krishna. So to say that spiritually realized person, he will not stay in a grhasta's house more than the time that is required to milk a cow, right? Only that much time he stays in a grhasta's house, why? To actually give spiritual knowledge to the grhasta, right? Otherwise, a spiritual person, he is not in need of anything from the grhasta, he is not going to talk a words flattering the grhasta etcetera, why? Because he is not in need, generally, why do we flatter people? Because we want something from them. So we tell them nice words, flatter them so that we can get some benefit out of them. But such a person is not a spiritualist, a spiritualist or a guru or a person who is on the path of Krishna consciousness, he calls a spade a spade. Of course, we need to keep those, keep the words of Anutvega Karavakam, Satyam Priyam Hitam Jayat. We should talk in a way that is pleasing, we should talk in a way that is beneficial to others, we should talk in a way that is not agitating to others. But at the same time, we need not, it's very important to speak the satyam, the truth, isn't it? We are just because we want to talk sweetly, we are not going to speak falsehood, right? So satyam priyam hitam jayat, it has to be truthful and as much as possible we tell in a way that is pleasing to the other person, so others can take up that idea and implement in his life. And also, it should be for the benefit of that person. Of course, a spiritual person always looks at the benefit of the other person, but it is not go and, you know, maska, right? Maska Mar, maska Mar, like in Hindi, right? They don't go and flatter the person, stay in his home, you know, sit and, you know, because he's getting good food and, you know, good accommodation there, no, that is not the purpose. Then he is not even a spiritual person, a spiritual person or a sanyasi or a, or a highly elevated person, he goes to a particular place only to purify them. Engage them in Krishna consciousness, give them a knowledge about Krishna and then they will come back. And it event and the charity that, that a grhasta is supposed to give to such a spiritual person is not for the benefit of the spiritual person. Because such a person may even do madukari anywhere else also and they may get what they want. But for the, for the grhasta to advance in his own spiritual life, he needs to give charity to such elevated ramanas, to such elevated spiritual people. So that he can, his consciousness can be cleared and he can be able to understand his transcendental subject matters, right? So in the interest of the, say, in the interest of sense, right? Swarta Gati Vishnu, right? In the previous perpert also Prabhupada mentioned, swarta Gati Vishnu, that means in my own self-interest, right? We all have our own self-interest in, you know, in the first place, initially at least when we come to Krishna consciousness. But even our best self-interest lies when we practice Krishna consciousness and we give Krishna to others. Because Krishna himself says, such a person becomes very dear to me, right? And Krishna becomes somebody's best friend, then what can that person lack? Whatever that person wants, Krishna will provide. Yogakshima Bahamiam, Krishna tells in Bhagavad Gita, to a person who always engages in my glories, engages in speaking about my glories and who enlightens one another about talking to me, then what do I do? I carry what the person lacked and I preserve what the person already has. So what are we supposed to do? We are supposed to do, every activity that we do should be for the pleasure of the Lord. And even when we go home to home, made the distribution of books etcetera, we should know that we are doing it to please Prabhupada. That is why whether or not the books get sold, we continue with our endeavor, right? Not that five people didn't take, then, you know, we do feel, of course, it's not that, you know, we should not work how we can, how we can better distribute the books. The first step is to understand the other person, we have to work, we have to give our best endeavor. But the result should not be the motivating factor for us to continue with the process of devotional service, that's what is mentioned here, yeah? Okay. Text number nine, hold read, Karpa Gali Madhaji, go ahead.
Translation, translation by Perpada, Perpada Ki Jay. Work done as a sacrifice for Vishnu has to be performed, otherwise work causes bondage in this material world. Therefore, perform your prescribed duties for satisfaction and in that way you will always remain free from bondage. Perpert, shall I continue, Madhaji?
Yes, yes, please.
Perpert, since one has to work even for the simple maintenance of the body, the prescribed duties for a particular social portion and quality are so made that, 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 that first purpose can be fulfilled. Yegya means Lord Vishnu or sacrificial performances. All sacrificial performances are all, are, also are meant for the satisfaction of Lord Vishnu. The Vedas enjoined, yegya vay Vishnu. In other words, the same purpose is served whether the, whether one performs prescribed yegyas or directly serves Lord Vishnu. Krishna conscious is therefore performance of yegna as it is described in this verse. The Varna Srima Institution also aims at satisfying Lord Vishnu. Varnas, Varnas, Varna. Vishnu Purana 3.8.8. Therefore, one has to work for the satisfaction of Vishnu. Any other work done in this material world will be a cause of bondage for both good and evil work.
Have their reactions. Madhaji, your voice is breaking. Is your internet okay? Any other work done in this material world will be a cause of bondage for both good and evil work, have their reactions and any reaction binds the performer. Okay, Devil Madhaji, would you like to continue? Therefore?
Yeah, Hare Krishna, Dhanvath Pranam. Therefore, one has to work for the satisfaction of Vishnu. Any other work done in this material world will be a cause of bondage for both good and evil work, have their reactions and any reaction by. Ends the performer. Therefore, one has to work in Krishna consciousness to satisfy Krishna or Vishnu and while performing such activities, one is in liberated stage. This is the great art of doing work and in the beginning, this process requires very expert guidance. One should therefore act very diligently under the expert guidance of a devotee of Lord Krishna or under the direct instruction of Lord Krishna himself, under whom Arjuna had the opportunity to work. Nothing should be performed for sense gratification, but everything should be done for the satisfaction of Krishna. This practice will not only save one from the reaction of work, but also gradually elevate one to transcendental loving service of the Lord, which alone can raise one to the kingdom of God.
Hare Krishna, Dhanvath Pranam. Yeah, thank you so much, yeah. So here, Prabhupada is actually elaborating on how do we perform a karma, right? What is a karma? A karma means we perform our activities, but we are neither attached to the results nor are we focused on getting the success for the particular activity. We perform our duty for the pleasure of the Lord, right? It's not the first two lines, like we said, Karma Nevaarika Arasthe Ma Phalishu Kadachina, but Ma Phalishu is not the ultimate. What is ultimate? Ma Karma Phala Hethur Bur, that, that line is only most important, Ma Karma Phala. That means Krishna says, give the fruits of your actions to me, right? When we give the fruits of our actions to Lord Krishna, then whatever be the fruit, right? Krishna is already happy and they are performing that endeavor for his pleasure. So whether that turns out to be a success or it turns out to be a failure, does not really matter to a devotee like that. Okay, let's move ahead, text number 10. Devil Madhaji, you want to continue? What is the time? 12:36, we still have time, yeah? Madhaji, would you like to read? Network issue, okay, that's fine, Karpa Gali Madhaji, wrong problem, okay. So in the beginning of creation, the Lord of all creatures sent forth generations of men and demi gods along with sacrifices for Vishnu and blessed them by saying, be thou happy by this yajna or sacrifice. Because its performance will bestow upon you everything desirable for living happily and achieving liberation. Perpert by Shri La Prabhupada, Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jay. Okay, okay, Devil Madhaji, you can, please unmute. I thought you were already unmuted.
Hare Krishna, thank you. Perpert, perpert by Shri La Prabhupada, Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jay. Sorry, just a moment. Yeah, the material creation by the Lord of cre- creature. Yeah, the material creation by the Lord of creatures Vishnu is a chance offered to the conditioned souls to come back home, back to Godhead. All living entities within the material creation are conditioned by material nature because of their forgetfulness of their relationship to Vishnu or Krishna, the supreme personality of Godhead. The vedic principles are to help us understand this eternal relation as it is stated in the Bhagavad Gita. Vedesha sarvir ahamevo vedye ho. The Lord says that the purpose of the Vedas are to understand him. In the vedic hymns, it is said, patim vishvasya meshvaram. Therefore, the Lord of the living entities is the supreme personality of Godhead Vishnu. In the Shrimad Bhagavatam also, second cantor, fourth chapter, twentieth shloka, Shriya Shukhdeva Goswami describes the Lord as Pati in so many ways. Shreya patir yajna pati hi prajapati, dhiyam patir lokpatir dhara pati hi, patir gatis chandkavishni satvatam, prasidatam, me bhagavan satam pati hi. The prajapati is Lord Vishnu and he is the Lord of all living creatures, all worlds and all beauties and the protector of everyone. The Lord created this material world to enable the conditioned souls to learn how to perform yajnas, sacrifices for the satisfaction of Vishnu. So that while in the material world, they can live very comfortably without anxiety and after finishing the present material body, they can enter into the kingdom of God. That is the whole program for the conditioned soul. The performance of vyashanada, conditioned souls gradually become Krishna consciousness and become godly in all respects. In the age of Kali, the sankirta yajna, the chanting of the names of God is recommended by the vedic scriptures. And this transcendental system was introduced by Lord Chaitanya for the deliverance of all men in this age. Sankirta yajna and Krishna consciousness go well together. Lord Krishna in his devotional form as Lord Chaitanya is mentioned in the Shrimad Bhagavatam, eleventh cantor, fifth chapter, thirty-second verse as follows with special reference to the sankirta yajna. Krishna varanam tisha krishnam, sangha, sangho pangastra parshadam, yajna sankirtana prayer, yajanti hesu medasa. In this age of Kali, people who are endowed with sufficient intelligence will worship the Lord, who is accompanied by his associates by performance of sankirta yajna. Other yajnas performed in the vedic literatures are not easy to perform in this age of Kali. But the sankirta yajna is easy and sublime for all purposes, as recommended in Bhagavad Gita also, nine point fourteen. Hare Krishna, Madhaji, Dharmapram, thank you so much.
Hare Krishna, thank you so much. Yeah, so here, uh, Prabhupada is, see generally also even in the material world, we see, um, that if you are too lazy, right? Then what do we do? We try to find out a way by which without external efforts, we can complete that particular task, right? So, uh, you know, we try to automate, right? So that things, things take less time to do it or, uh, we employ a machine to do it rather than we do it manually. Because that kind of builds in the efficiency in the work and we don't have to labor very hard, right? Especially we know in this age of Kali, right? We are all, um, uh, prayan alpayusha sabya kalavasmin yugejanaha, mandasumanda matayyo mandabhagya upidritaha. That means we are misguided, we are, we have, we have a very short lifespan and then we are misguided, we are quarrelsome. So for all of this, right? We can't do activities which are perfect, right? So we are because of our, um, mand, mand buddhi, like you say, right? Because we don't have sufficient intelligence, we don't know what is right, what is wrong. So hence, the process that is prescribed for Kaluga, to attain the same destination, that is actually attained by meditation in Satya Yoga, by deity worship and Dwapara Yoga, by, um, uh, by performance of yajnas, right? Fire yajnas in Atretha Yoga, they can all be attained, like by the mercy of Chetan Mahaprabhu. The same result can be attained simply by sitting in the comfort of our home and chanting, Hare Krishna. And here, uh, there is a very beautiful verse, uh, which is given from Shrimad Bhagavatam, eleventh cantor, it's also there in Chetan Charitamrata. Krishna avaranam, that means he is not the complexion same as Krishna, but tushakrishnam, he is not different from Krishna. Sangho pangastra parshadam, that means what? Like generally, whenever an avatar comes, right? They have some weapons or something that they are holding, right? But this Chetan, Chetan Mahaprabhu Avatar, what is he? What is his weapon, right? They carry Vishnu Tathva, they carry Shankachakra Gada Padma, right? All of them carry some, some weapon or the other, right? The Lord Shiva carries Trishul, like this, all of the, all of the demi gods as well as the supreme lord, we know that they carry weapons, right? Yada yada idharma separitranai sadhana vinashai shadustram. Destroy the miscreants, they carry all these weapons, right? But whom does, I mean, what weapon does Chetan Mahaprabhu carry? He carries sangho pangastra parshadam, right? Means his associates and his paraphernalia, they are only his weapons. Why? Because he is using sankirtana is the, sankirtana means what? In the association of sadhus, we do kietana. That means association of devotees is the greatest strength in this age of Kali to even practice Hari Nam Sankirtan or to practice Hare Krishna Mahamitra Japa. By this, we can easily attain the same destination that is attained in other yogas. By this way, we can easily attain. The process is also fast, but it only requires, um, simplicity and faith, right? Prabhupada mentions, um, you know, this process is very simple and easy, right? But it is easy for the simple minded. But what have we done? We have complicated our life so much that even the most simple process becomes or looks to be the most difficult thing. Of course, the age also is playing, playing a role here that because we are all Kaluga Vasis, we cannot expect much from ourselves. But if you have sincere faith and we have sincere gratitude and we perform this process as prescribed, right? And the medicine and the, they say the diet as well as the medicine, right? The medicine has to be taken in the prescribed doses. If the doctor says take it three times a day before food, exactly where to do that. But if I say, no, no, I'll take only once, then we will not get the desired success. We may, it may take a longer time or maybe it will even have a negative effect. That is why it is very important to follow the prescription to the tea, right? And similarly diet, right? What am I supposed to take? What kind of food I should take? Whether I should take a liquid diet or whether I should take, uh, uh, you know, whatever may be. Prescribed, a particular prescribed kind of diet like rasam, they say, you know, uh, that plain rasam, that means what? You are not supposed to eat any solid stuffs, you are supposed to just be on liquid diet for certain, a certain number of days like that, right? So whatever is a diet that is prescribed for us, for us, what is a diet? Having only Krishna prasadham, which is regulated, which is sanctioned and sanctified, that is our diet. And what is our medicine? Chanting Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, hare hare, hare Ram, hare Ram, 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 hare hare. So that is our prescribed process, right? So with this, uh, let's conclude Bhagavad Gita, let's move on to Nectar of Instruction, Granth Raj, Shrimad Bhagavad Gita Ki Jaye. Jagatguru Shri La Prabhupada, Shraguru Devu Ki Jaye. So we will continue with text number eleven tomorrow, where, um, uh, the relationship between the human beings as well as the supreme personality of Godhead, as well as the relationship between the human beings and the devatas, that is going to be discussed, right? We also have, now we have a relationship with the devatas because the devatas are providing a lot of things. Devatas are giving us rains, there is fire god, there is, um, there is this, you know, there is indra, varuna, agni, all of them, right? They are all providing us various things by which we are able to, uh, go on in this particular material world. So what is our duty towards them? What is the duty that we are supposed to express towards them? Are we supposed to return back something to them? That is what will be the subsequent verses. All right, so now let's move on to, uh, Nectar of Instruction. So today we are going to start with, um, verse number four of Nectar of Instruction. So quickly, if you have to summarize one, two and three, um, the first verse is talks about the six urges to be controlled. The second verse talks about the six things that we need to avoid, uh, which will kill our bhakti, uh, bhakti, uh, bhakti latha or which will kill, kill our kripur bhakti, uh, which is basically atya hara praya shischa prajalpa niyam aagra. Jana sangas chalo yam chashadbet bhaktir vinashyati. So we discussed whatever, what are the things we should avoid? And then you also discussed what are the things we need to develop in our life. Uchha, you should have enthusiasm, nishchaya, you should have complete confidence that Krishna will always protect me. Uchha, nishchaya, dhairiyat, we should have patience, tatatkarma pravartana, we perform our duty for the pleasure of the supreme personality of Godhead. Jana sangha, Lord said, no, sangatyaaga sathovritte. Sangatyaaga means we give up the association of those metalistic people because we will become like them, right? That is why we should be very careful whom we are giving our ears to. Then we hear something from somebody constantly, then what happens? We will become like them or we will become like what they are saying to us, right? That is why we hear only from a bona fide authority. And then, um, uh, sathovritte, right? We avoid metalistic people, but we, but we are constantly hankering, uh, constantly taking the association of those who are guiding us, who are motivating us, who are inspiring us in our spiritual life, right? So today, uh, we are going to talk about the loving exchange between devotees, right? We are avoiding metalistic people, we are taking the association of senior devotees. But within, um, you know, devotees in the congregation, right? How are we going to express our loving exchanges? That's what this verse is, let's go ahead. Dadati pratighranati, guyam akyaati prichati, bhukate bojethe chaiwa, shadvidam preeti lakshanam. Okay, Nagwani Madhaji, go ahead. Translation by Shri La Prabhupada, Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jaye. So what are the six loving exchanges between devotees? Preeti lakshanam, loving exchange between devotees, yes.
Offering, uh, gifts to charity, accepting charitable gifts, revealing one's mind, uh, to, one's mind to confi-, um, one's mind, confidence, sorry, inquiring confidentially, accepting prasada and offering, uh, offering prasada are the six symptoms of the, uh, six symptom of the, six symptoms, uh, of love shared by the devotee and, uh, devotee and another.
Perpord. So once again, Madhaji, yeah, you can continue to read, just give me like one minute here. So if you go back to the verse, dadati, dadati means to give, to give in charity, pratighranati means to accept in charity. Guyam, guyam means confidential, right? Um, guyam akyaati prichati, akyaati means to ask, prichati means to accept, that means knowledge, reveal one's mind in confidence and to hear one's mind in confidence, hear another's mind in confidence. That is guyam akyaati prichati, bhukate bojethe chaiwa, bhukate means to accept foodstuffs. Bojethe means to, to give, uh, to give, uh, to, to give foodstuffs to others. That is what foodstuffs means prasada, right? We accept prasada and we distribute prasada to devotees. And in this way, what happens? The love between devotees will increase. These are sadvidam, six ways of preeti lakshanam, six ways of loving exchange between devotees, right? So what are we doing now? Which angle of devotional service are we practicing now? We are doing guyam akyaati prichati. That means we are studying the books of Shri La Prabhupada and then we are sharing and then we are also asking, whenever we have a query, we are asking. So we are doing this guyam akyaati prichati, hmm? That's what we are doing here, all right. Uh, so let's move forward, uh, translation, uh, we, we read this, all right, Perpord, yes, Nagwani Madhaji, go ahead. In this verse. Okay.
Yeah. Harebol. Uh, in this, uh, verse, Sheila Rupa Goswami explains how to perform devotional activities in the association of other devotees. There are six kinds of activities, giving, uh, giving charity, uh, charity in the devotees, to the devotees, accepting, uh, from the devotees, whatever they may, uh, whatever they may offer in return. Uh, opening, uh, what is it? Opening one's mind to the devotees, uh, inquiring from, uh, inquiring from them about the confidential service of the Lord, honoring prasada or, um, honoring prasada or as the, uh, Lord's grace.
No, 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 our spiritual food, our spiritual food given by the devotees and feeding the devotees with prasada.
Yeah, sorry, uh, giving the, uh, devotees, uh, with.
No, 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 Madhaji, and there is, I think, you know, on your mobile, you are not able to read properly, isn't it? Maybe next time you have the book, Madhaji, yeah, so that it's easy for you to follow, yeah.
Yeah, Madhaji, and expand from here to there, you know? An experienced devotee explains and then, um, inexperienced devotee, inexperienced devotee, um, learns from him. This is, uh, jnana, this is.
Guyam akyaati prichati.
Guyam akyaati prichati. When a devotee, uh, distributes, uh, prasada, um, prasada, remnants of food offered to the supreme personality of Godhead in order to maintain, uh, maintain our spirit of, uh, devotional service, we must accept this prasada, uh, this prasada as the Lord's grace received through the pure devotees. We should also invite, uh, pure devotees to offer, uh, to our home, our home, offer them prasada and, uh, be, uh, prepared to praise, uh, be prepared to please them in all respects. This is called bhakt, this is called, uh, bhakti.
Bhukate bojethe chaiwa.
Bojethe chaiwa. Uh, even.
Harebol. Thank you. Yeah, so here, uh, the six, the six loving exchanges are further described, like what we discussed, right? Why, why we have to call devotees, especially those who are advanced to us and, um, offer them prasada and take their remnants, right? We know this verse from Chetan Charitamrata, right? Bhakta padh du liya, ra bhakta padh jala, bhakta bukta avesheshatina mahabal. There are three things that will instant, instantaneously improve our spiritual life. That means will give, give us taste in, uh, practicing Krishna consciousness. There are bhakta, bhakta here refers to a very, very senior advanced devotee, right? Bhakta padh dhuli, that means, uh, the, the, uh, the dust at the lotus feet of a spiritual master or dust at the lotus feet of a very senior vaishnava. Bhakta padh du liya, ra bhakta padh jala, that means water that is washed the lotus feet of such a spiritual master or such a senior guru, right? Bhakta bukta avesheshat, uh, that means the, the, the mahaprasada, right? Or the, uh, prasada that is offered to such a great, such a, uh, such a guru or a spiritual master or such an elevated vaishnava, that these three things can actually, um, increase our taste for bhakti, right? So that is why it is, it is said that we should call such devotees home, serve them nice Krishna prasada and after serving them, I know, and then take their remnants. And in this way, what do we do? We advance in devotional service like that. Okay, so especially giving an offering, prasada is given here. And then, um, of course, uh, the akyaati prichati is also important, uh, because hearing in confidence, that means one should not go and tell others, oh, this person asked me this and I explained, no. That is between, uh, the devotees, that is why it is said, things have to be maintained in confidence. Guyam akyaati prichati, asking and revealing one's mind in confidence. And then of course, the first one is to give charity, right? To give charity and also to accept charity like that. Okay, so, uh, let's continue, a whole read. Okay, Sinnoh Madhaji, go ahead, even in ordinary social activities.
Hare Krishna. Even in ordinary social activities, these six types of dealings between two loving friends are absolutely necessary. For instance, when one businessman wishes to contact another businessman, he arranges a feast in a hotel and over the feast openly expresses what he wishes to do. He then inquires from his business friend how he should act and sometimes presents are exchanged. Thus, whenever there is a dealing of preeti or love in intimate dealings, these six activities are executed. The previous verse, Sheila Rupa Goswami advised that one should renounce worldly, uh, association and keep company with, uh, the devotees, sangatyaaga sathovritte. The International Society for Krishna Consciousness has been established to facilitate these six kinds of loving exchanges between devotees. This society was started single-handedly, but because people are coming forward and dealing with the give and take policy, the society is now expanding all over the world. We are glad the people are donating very liberally to the development of the society's activities and people are also eagerly, uh, accepting whatever humble contribution we are giving them in the shape of books and magazines, uh, dealing strictly with the subject matter of Krishna consciousness. We sometimes hold Hare Krishna festivals and invite life members and friends to participate with the feast in the accepting prasada. Although most of our members come from the higher rungs of society, they nonetheless come and take whatever little prasada we are able to offer them. Sometimes the members and supporters inquire very confidentially about the methods of performing devotional service and we try to explain this. In this way, our society is successfully spreading all over the world and the intellig- intelligent, intelligentsia of all countries is gradually appreciating our Krishna conscious activities. The life of the Krishna conscious society is nourished by these six types of loving exchange among the members. Therefore, people must be given the chance to associate with the devotees of his con because simply by reciprocating in the six ways mentioned above, an ordinary man can fully revive this dormant Krishna consciousness. In Bhagavad Gita two point sixty-two, it is stated, sangat sanjayate kamaha, one's desires and ambitions develop according to the company one keeps. It is often said that a man is known by his company and if an ordinary man associates with devotees, he will certainly develop this dormant Krishna consciousness. The understanding of Krishna consciousness is innate in every living entity and it's already developed to some extent when the living entity takes a human body. It is said in the Chaitan.
Harebol. Yeah, so a person is known by the association that he keeps. If we associate ourselves with Krishna conscious devotees all the time, then what happens? Our uchha will increase, our dhairiyat will increase, our, uh, what is that, uh, nishchaya will increase, determination, our confidence, our enthusiasm, everything will increase, right? Because such a person is also trying to revive his dormant Krishna consciousness. And when both are encouraging each other, that's why, uh, Prabhupada also said that the husband and the wife, together they should motivate each other and advance in Krishna consciousness, right? In this way, when they support each other. In this way, when they support each other, then, as soon as Radharan marriage was also saying, the other day, you know, during a particular wedding, he was saying, one and one becomes eleven, right? It becomes an army actually to practice Krishna consciousness. It is not that one person is feeling, is not feeling complete and the other person is, you know, is getting married to make oneself feel complete, such a marriage will not work, right? When both of them are complete individuals and they come together, keeping Lord Krishna in the center of whatever they do, then such a marriage will be successful because the goal of the particular marriage, the desire or what the, the activities that are performed by the, by the people in that household or the husband and the wife is to satisfy the supreme lord, right? Because the, as the association we keep, say the husband wants to earn a lot of money, right? He wants to go early in the morning, comes late in the night, etcetera. Then, uh, you know, the, the wife being with the husband also, you know, if the wife is not very strict in her practices, then you know, she may just be, uh, you know, following the husband's schedule, whenever he goes, uh, you know, to office, she will sleep. Whenever he is at home, then you know, she will not take care of her spiritual life as a, as something that is very important, right? She will just go ahead with, just supporting her husband, uh, that is also good, that is the duty of a wife to do that. But especially for a devotee, right? One needs to ensure that whatever activities one does, right? One does not do ye no, da no, right? Let me, you know, whatever I like, I will do or you know, this is situation, let me do this like that, no. Uh, devotee should always keep, uh, is my progress in Krishna consciousness, uh, you know, happening, right? Or is it getting stunted by certain activities? And you should carefully avoid those activities which are not allowing us to grow in Krishna consciousness. And you should favorably, we should do those activities which help us, which will help us cultivate our bhakti, isn't it? Uh, to the extent we express our desire, to that extent we will get the association by the mercy of the Lord to advance in devotional service, right? That is why it is said that Krishna consciousness, Prabhupada says in his famous lecture, Krishna consciousness is not an artificial imposition on the mind. We are all originally Krishna conscious living entities, but due to our association with matter, this Krishna consciousness has become dormant in our hearts. So what are we doing by chanting Hare Krishna? We are simply bringing out this dormant Krishna consciousness, we are bringing it outside, right? Just like, just like a person, yeah, uh, the other day, uh, you know, uh, you know, I was hearing this, uh, in one class. And so this person was saying, you know, two people met in a bus stop, hmm, and, uh, you know, the bus came, uh, you know, but the bus was so crowded, actually. So both of them tried to push each other and tried to get into the bus, both of them could not get into the bus, right? And both of them were, you know, came back to the bus stop and they were fighting with each other. You know, you, you have no regard for me, I'm such an old man, you are such a young man, you know, you should allow me to get into the bus, etcetera, etcetera. The next bus comes, again, both of them do with this, right? You know, they fight with each other and both of them cannot get into the bus. And then while talking only, the person is saying, you know, uh, you know, if my son, uh, you know, were here, yeah, so and so, so and so name, he tells, right? Um, if you were here, uh, then things would have been different, you know, you people had no regard for old men like that. And then this, when this person, young person heard the name, they said, oh, that is my father's name, right? Uh, they were long lost, you know, in that, in that way, hmm, or maybe second or third person or whatever it may be. Uh, what is the moral of the story? The moral of the story is that, uh, when this person knew that the father or the old man was actually related to him in, in blood, it was a family relation. Okay, maybe, uh, you know, you know, they used to have, you know, um, many, many children, you know? So in that way, there could be, uh, you know, a great grandfather or a grandfather, whatever may be. When he knew that this person is related to me, the next time the bus came, what did he do? Okay, um, uncle, you get into the bus and go, I will take the next bus. Now, so in this way, he sacrificed, right? So when we have our relationship established for somebody, only then we can sacrifice for that person, right? If we think, uh, we have no relation with somebody, then what do we do? We will try to acquire maximum for ourselves, not trying to give anything to anybody. Because I have my relationship only with myself, my sense gratification, am I satisfied, right? But the moment we have a relationship with the other person, we are willing to sacrifice for that other person. So that's what it is, alright, so let's read the last paragraph, uh, for the day and then we continue tomorrow. Hold read now, somebody is not read, Sudha Madhji, go ahead, yeah.
Hari Krishna Madhji, Thunder.
Hari Krishna.
It is said in Chaitanya Charitaamrata, madhyamila, twenty-two point one zero seven. Nitya sidha Krishna prema, sadhya kabu naya, kavanaadi shuddha chitte, karaye udaya. Pure love for Krishna is eternally established in the hearts of living entities. It is not something to be gained from another source. When the heart is purified by hearing and chanting, the living entity naturally awakens. Since Krishna consciousness is inherent in every living entity, every one should be given a chance to hear about Krishna. Simply by hearing and chanting, the living entity, the living, simply by hearing and chanting, uh, sharanam keetanam, sharanam keetanam, one's heart is directly purified and one's original Krishna consciousness is immediately awakened. Krishna consciousness is not artificially imposed upon the heart, it is already there. When one chants the holy name of the supreme personality of Godhead, the heart is cleansed of all mundane contamination. In the first stanza of Sri Siksha Astakalawat, Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu says.
Yeah, thank you, Madhji. Okay, Madhji, Hari. Yeah, we'll do that tomorrow. So what is that, starting process is given tomorrow, right? We'll start reading it, what does this chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamitra do to us, right? But overall, what does it do? It revives our dormant affection for the supreme personality of Godhead so that we can perform all of our work for his satisfaction. Once the relationship is awakened, then we can easily do everything for the pleasure of the Lord. But the problem is, they have, their relationship has become so dormant, that's why we don't find the connection. Because we don't find the connection, we are don't, we are not doing the activities that should be done because the connection is there. It's only that we've forgotten the connection. It's just like somebody has got this amnesia or, you know, forgotten. Then what happens? That, that a person does not recognize, oh, this is my wife, this is my husband, this is my child, this is my mother. And in that way, you know, their loving reciprocation is not there, so service is also not there. But the time, you know, when, when the memory is revived, what happens? Oh, so many years I forgot to serve you, now let me try and do, serve you very nicely like that, that attitude comes, right? Similarly, the same is our, we are all indeed, uh, we are all suffering from amnesia, we are all suffering from, for, you know, having forgotten our relationship with the supreme personality of Godhead, now we have to revive it, right? Otherwise, you know, these are, um, uh, these are the actual conditions, you know, of being in, being in the mental hospital, right? When you go to the mental hospital and everybody, somebody will be saying, I am a king, somebody will be saying, you know, uh, I am so and so, I am Mr. So and so, I am the president, I am the prime minister, etcetera. Like that, you are also mad people, in this material world, we are all mad. You're all thinking, I am this body, I am, you know, I am the wife of so and so, I am the husband of so and so, I am working in this organization, I am a vice president. All these are material designations which are not true. So we are all shouting like mad people in the mental hospital, right? But then, then we'll get cured, then what we will say, we will only say, Jiveira Swarupay Krishna Nityadas. I am the servant of the supreme personality of Godhead and this is my duty to serve the Lord, that is our constitutional position. If we identify with anything else, we are in the mental hospital, right? So we all don't want to be in the mental hospital for long, we all want to get cured and we want to go out, right? We want to go back from back to Godhead. And for that, you need to understand and study the books of Shri La Prabhupada, act in the words given by Shri La Prabhupada and in this wish La Prabhupada has ensured, I will take you back home, back to Godhead. Just follow the four reglet principles, study my books, follow my instructions and then chant sixteen rounds minimum and then I will take you back home, back to Godhead. Jagat Guru Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jay, Nectar of Instruction Ki Jay. Nithai Gauri, Mande, Hari Hari Bol. So devotees can switch on your cameras, after two minutes we will see who are all there, quickly we will do Hari Nam Sankirtan. Sorry, I'm like a, I'll be croaking like a frog little bit, but that's fine. Uh, Krishna is Bhagwagari and Vaishnavas are also very merciful. Om, Vishnu Pahajaaya, Krishna Krishna, Guchle, Srimath Bhakti Redanta, Swaminiti Namde. Namaste Saraswate Deva, Gauravani Prachaari Ne, Nirviseshashunyavadi, Paschatya Deshadaari Ne. Jaya Sri Krishna Chaitanya, Prabhu Nityananda, Shiyadvaita, Gadhadarashiva Sadhi, Gaurabhakta Ganda. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hari Hari, Hari Ramo, Hari Ramo, Ramo Ramo, Hari Hari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hari Hari, Hari Ramo, Hari Ramo, Ramo Ramo, Hari Hari. Jaya Gauranitaya, Jaya Gauranitaya, Gauranitaya, Jaya Gauranitaya, Jaya Radha Madha, Radha Madha, Radha Madha, Radha Madha. Jaya Jaya Jagannath, Gurdade, Subhadra, Sudhasan, Jaya Jaya Prabhu Paad, Prabhu Paad. Guru De, Guru De, Nithai Gauri Hari Bol, Hari Bol, Hari Bol, Hari Bol. Hari Nam Sankirtan Ki Jay, Jagat Guru Shri La Prabhupada Shragurdevu Ki Jay. Vanshakal Padru Bhascha, Prabhas Indubhe, Vajabadi Tanam, Pavane Bhiyavishnave Bhiyonamunamaha. Anandakoti Veshna Ma Bindki Jay, Jagat Guru Shri La Prabhupada Shragurdevu Ki Jay, Nithai Gauri, Mande, Hari Hari Bol, Hari Krishna. So whoever has any queries or comments can unmute now and you can share it. If you have any queries, you can ask now. So let's see who are all there, Shobha Madhji, Shridhar Prabhu, Karpa Gavali Madhji, Ramya Madhji, Nishya Madhji, Shri Priya Sampath Madhji, oh, Hari Bol, nice. Uh, Rajneesh Prabhu, uh, Sneha Prava Madhji, Sindhu Madhji is there, Sudha Madhji. Alright, thank you very much for joining in, uh, we'll meet tomorrow for our Brahman Murti chanting session for those of us who join us and we will meet, oh, tomorrow is Friday, yeah, so we'll meet tomorrow for Bhagavad Gita Nectar of Instruction, Hare Krishna, yes, Shridhar Prabhu.
Madhji, one information I wanted to share, la- last week I been to Mayapur and Naotidam, four days.
Hari Bol.
Hari Bol, I was some thousand people from Chennai and Bangalore, we are doing that, stayed a wonderful experience and I seen nearby and had a good experience, thank you, Madhji. This I wanted to convey to you.
Hari Krishna, very, very nice, you worked, you prayed, you kept all of us in your prayers.
That is the reason I could have helped attend the class for that.
Oh, okay, 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 I hope you prayed for all of us, you remembered us, right?
Yes, Madhji.
Thank you so much.
More chantings there.
Hari Bol, wonderful, wonderful, yeah, his only, Shri Padakaswami Maharaj, he says that if you, if you perform devotional service in the Dham, you get thousand times the credit. So, yeah, very wonderful to be in the Dham and to do more devotional service, Hare Krishna. Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jay, Nithai Gauri, Mande, Hari Hari Bol, thank you.